Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and so before we have the citizens request to speak part, we're going to have recognition. We have the fall musical coming up, so we're asking those people to come forward. And I guess us folks here on the stage, we're going to go down and sit in the front row. And that works out.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Heisler. I'm one of the choir directors here at the high schools. Want to say thanks for inviting us here tonight. It's my 18th year teaching here. My husband and I have directed a lot of shows. I don't know, this is like 13, 14, 12, I don't know, a lot of them. And we're so excited to be bringing theater to our community again. Can't tell you how just excited these kids are to be able to perform for you on stage tonight. And for the show, we opened in just under a month now, so we're down to the last final week's home stretch of trying to get the last of the blocking and choreography done and then get everything perfect for you. So we just wanted to show you what we've been working on, still a work in progress, not perfect yet. But I'm excited to have them come sing for you. They'll introduce themselves and their song. I just wanted to say before they sing that we are doing the musical Annie, if you haven't heard already. And the show dates for that will be November 5th, 6th, and 7th, and then 12th, 13th, and 14th. So the first two weekends in November, we have shows on Friday and Saturday nights at 7:00 and Sundays at 2:00. And you can just go to hudsonraiders.org and get all your tickets online, pick your seats. Students are $10 and adults are $15. And we will have the box office open an hour before showtime. So if we have any seats left, you can come get them at the door on the night of the show, like an hour before showtime as well. So I'll let the students take it away from here. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Molly Weber. I'm a senior this year at Hudson High School and I am playing Miss Hannigan.
Hello, my name is Michael Worth. I'm also a senior this year and I will be playing Brewster Hannigan.
Hello, my name's Heather Derrick. I'm a junior at Hudson High School this year and I will be playing Lily St. Regis.
And today we will be singing Easy Street.
This is the scene where the villains plot their plan against Annie and her adoption.
Ah Aggie, how'd the two Hannigan kids ever end up like this? On the skids. I remember the way our sainted mother would sit and croon us her lullaby.
She takes bears a place that's like no other. You gotta get there before you die.
You don't get there by playing from the rulebook.
You stack the aces.
You load the dice.
Mother dear, oh, we know you're down there listening. How can we follow your sweet advice to Easy Street? Easy Street, where you sleep till noon. Yeah, 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 yeah. She'd repeat, Easy Street, better get there soon.
Say, Aggie, who was that dame I bumped into when I come in? Seemed like she had a couple of dollars.
She works for Oliver Warbucks. The Oliver Warbucks, the millionaire? No, the billionaire, you dumb hotel. She works from up in his mansion on Fifth Avenue.
Fifth Avenue? You don't live on Fifth Avenue.
He don't. Where does he live? Easy Street, Easy Street, where the rich folks play. Where they play all day. Move them feet, move them ever loving feet to Easy Street. When you get there, stay.
Aggie, what did that dame want?
She brought me the wonderful news that Annie, one of the orphans here, Annie, God, I hate that kid. He's getting adopted by Warbucks. He's gonna have everything. That rotten kid is gonna have everything. Crummy orphan living in the lap of luxury. It ain't fair. Nah, it ain't fair.
It ain't fair how we scrounge for three or four bucks while she gets Warbucks.
The little brat. It ain't fair. This here life is driving me nuts. While we get peanuts, she's living fat.
Maybe she holds the key, that little lady.
To getting more bucks.
Instead of less. Maybe we fix the game with something shady.
Where does that put us? Oh, tell her.
Give you one guess.
Yes! Easy Street, Easy Street, Annie is the key. Yes, siree, yes, siree, yeah. Easy Street, Easy Street, that's where we're gonna be.
Well, thank you, Ms. Heisler and the performers. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing that musical. And can they, people go and buy the tickets now? Are they on sale already? All right, good. So no waiting? I missed the early sale to school board members. We'll have to get in on that. All right. Next up on our agenda then is going to be citizens' request to speak. There kind of came in bunches and so I just want to clarify also something because there was some concern about folks stating their address. You don't need to state your address. Just do need to put it on this piece of paper. We keep the request to speak. And what we're trying to do is just verify that you're a citizen of the district rather than having folks coming from other school districts and weighing in on citizens' right to speak. It's really meant for citizens of the district. So first up, we have Gretchen with whom, and her subject matter is masks in schools. Please come forward. And by the way, I was going to say, given that we have a dozen requests, we're going to go with the two-minute limit that we've used at prior meetings.
I'm hoping you will allow for a few extra moments as this letter has been submitted on behalf of more than 120 school district members that have signed the petition that was submitted to you last night.
Yep, we read the petition. It'll still be two minutes. Okay?
As parents and citizens of Hudson, we entrust you with the responsibility to take reasonable steps to protect our children and the staff members that work with them in our schools. These steps must be based on science and information gleaned from reputable and qualified sources in the public health and medical communities, not based on fear of political repercussions or indifference to the real risks that COVID poses. We shared with you in the submitted version of this letter, two recent studies that outlined the effectiveness of masks in schools to prevent the spread of COVID-19, one of which showed a staggering 59% of outbreaks occurred in schools with no mask requirement. So what does this mean for Hudson? The matrix approach that the district has taken thus far has been reactive rather than proactive. It requires that students and staff test positive for COVID, and so by the time positive cases are reported, multiple individuals have been exposed. The data is clear, masks help. We know that you've heard from many people that masks don't work, that those who advocate for mask wearing are living in fear of a survivable disease, or that requiring to face masks interferes with personal liberty. We are not living in fear, we're living in the reality of a global pandemic. This is not the only area where the school has implemented requirements of all students for the safety of others. This is not a political request. This is not motivated by fear. This is based on real scientific research and facts. We request fully submit that you do your due diligence by obtaining information from legitimate sources and not abdicate your responsibility to our children. We hope you will agree that even one student or staff death that could be prevented is one too many. We ask that you make wearing a face mask mandatory in all district schools, at a minimum, all elementary schools, until all students are eligible for vaccination. Please listen to science. Don't simply bow to the loudest voices in the room who base their arguments on emotion instead of data. We are counting on you to do the right thing.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we have Carrie Race. Carrie is going to speak about support for actions the board has taken.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie Race and I live here. I come here tonight to express my support for the Hudson School Board, administration, and staff who have taken measures to keep our children and our community safe during this pandemic. Like many of us, I have vulnerable people in my life, grandchildren too young to be vaccinated and parents in their 80s with medical conditions, so I don't take unnecessary chances with their health. Many of us here tonight have watched the same group of folks speak at this forum in front of the school board and in other forums on their beliefs about the pandemic and your response to it. We respect the ability of everyone to be heard and to exercise their right to speak. After months of listening, many of us felt that it is important that those of us with a safety-first mindset speak up as well. So there are many of us who will be showing up at these meetings, if only to provide a physical presence to show support for our elected officials, the administration, and those who wish to speak in favor of safety precautions. Please continue to make decisions in the best interests of our students, staff, and community. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Right, next up, we have Addison Filiatro. She has perhaps questions or comments on the progress of the equity audit.
My name is Addison Filiatro and I live in Hudson. A year ago, I came to the October board meeting with many people who shared the experiences and questions in regards to equity and inequity within the district. I was hopeful because I had the opportunity to talk with most board members and it was said that equity work, which occurs across the spectrum of race, sexual orientation, abilities, and socioeconomic status would be a priority. Since then, the $35,000 taxpayer audit was completed and shared, but there have yet to be any public updates. There was a lot in there, but choosing a few attainable goals and setting a timeline for others seems like a logical next step that should be done by now. Otherwise, it was just a very expensive performative action. There are multiple glaring inequities within the audit, including that BIPOC kids tested the lowest in reading and math and have a low representation in advanced placement courses but have high rates of out-of-school suspension. This is not unique to Hudson, but what policies will you set to correct it? The lack of action is concerning because I have been told multiple variations from superintendent and board members that we live in a conservative district, or we will not be too hasty because then the pendulum will swing the other way. All this at this point sounds like excuses. The board sets the tone for the superintendent and district. You are here for all children. And if you're worried about reelectability or whether you'll go next in your political career, you shouldn't be. This is the one governing body solely responsible for the well-being of children and their education. Make sure staff has resources to dissect their own curriculum and evaluate whose voices are present and not present. Have regular trainings for staff and assess how resources are being spent. And let people know what you are actually doing. I hope when another year passes that there will be tangible things we can all be proud of in regards to equity because we are in fact here for all children.
Great, thank you. Next up is Sue Curtis, and just says she's going to express thank you and support to the school board.
Good evening. My name is Sue. I have two sons that are products of the school environment, a school district, and of course, they're brilliant, so thank you. I am a public school advocate, a 40-year professional career as an educator and a central office administrator. I have the utmost respect and regard for our school board members, school educators, and administration. I have seen the work that goes into planning, organizing, and facilitating effective school board meetings and aware of the research, the state statutes and guidelines, as well as the court outcomes that our school board members must read and stay current on. I'm cognizant of the hours that you spend to give to our community, often at the expense of your own families, to ensure a high-functioning school district. I'm also aware that this is a time, a challenging time, to govern schools. Unfortunately, in a climate of national disinformation, uncontrolled conspiracy theories, chaos, public scrutiny, and disruptive incivility, I am aware of the disinformation and the distortions used by our lawmakers in the recent bills that seek to further control Wisconsin public educators to advance their own political agendas. And frankly, given my deep respect for all of you, I find this exploitation appalling. I'm here today though to show my support for you and the work that you do to make our community a very strong community and respect you for your involvement. I support you as you make sound decisions based on data, science, information from our public health departments and the CDC. And I support the continued progress in achieving our goal, your goal, of equitable experiences for our students and the continued action on our equity audit and outcomes. Thank you for the continued work on social, emotional well-being. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Right, next up, Teri Anderson. Two subjects, parents' consent to mega choice and history teaching in the school. Ms. Anderson, all right, coming forward.
Hi, thanks for speaking, for letting us speak today. I do want to just comment on the first speaker. And when she was talking about having the data, and I would like to ask you to refer to the Florida information that was just put out about masking, that there is no difference in the outcome of masked or unmasked in the schools. And you can look that up. That's recent, I think just this week, just came out. I would also like to call your attention to your own form. Over-the-counter medication. FDA line number one, FDA-approved over-the-counter medications will be administered with a written parent consent. So this is medical consent. It's on your own form from your parents. Masking is a medical consent. We have to give you consent if they take a Tylenol. We have to give you consent if they take a Benadryl. We have to give you consent if they take anything else. I'd like to also call your attention to the warning label on a simple aspirin bottle. Do not use if allergic to aspirin or any other pain reliever. Ask a doctor before you use if you have any of these issues, stomach bleeding, history of stomach problems, high blood pressure, heart disease, liver, kidney disease. You have to ask a doctor before you put forward any of these things. They need a doctor's consent. So when you're saying you want to tell a child or that family that they have to mask, you don't, you're not privy to any of their medical conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Right, next up is Ben DeJova, and he's speaking on administrative response to unmasked students.
Good evening, school board members and fellow parents. This is for all of you. I just want to talk to you about my experience at the high school on September 14th. My daughter and some of her friends made a choice to go to school unmasked. It wasn't something that I, as a parent, made them do. I am proud of my child and her independent critical thinking, which I know has historically been supported by Hudson schools. And she entered the building on the 14th. They were immediately taken to the principal's office, my daughter and a group, and seeing these students together. Administrative administration physically separated them and specifically told them not to leave or talk to other students. They were intimidated, bullied, told not to comply. They had their college education threatened and told that by doing this, that they were going to get an in-school suspension, which would prevent them from going to college. This is being told to 15 and 16-year-olds. I, as an adult, know more better than that, but not high school students. Their options were to have a parent come get you, comply, or again, have that suspension put on your record. This was personally confirmed to me, both by the superintendent who was in the building as well as the principal. There was no discussion of COVID or health risks related to these kids walking into school unmasked. It wasn't like you're putting yourself in danger, you're putting others in danger. There was no discussion, like it was only threats on their education. What administrator or teacher would ever use a student's future education as a disciplinary action? Apparently, our administration at Hudson School District would, and that's sad, because I've been a longtime supporter of the schools as well. Also, Wisconsin Department of Education states seclusion should not be used as a disciplinary measure and that parents in the school board must be notified. I don't know if you were, but I know that some parents were not. Second, we had asked for information on exemptions week prior to this incident, and it was not, no guidelines were given. And then our request was denied because the school district didn't believe our beliefs. It is not up to the school district to determine what I believe or what my family believes.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Kathy Roberts.
Hi, I'm Kathy Roberts. I did not come with a script. I came here to support the school board and the administration. I am concerned about the lack of civil discourse, and I have one question, and that is, what are we teaching our children when we have this so, so much division in our country? And there's been some pretty awful signs that I've seen that really make my heart sick. And they were political signs. So I just, I want to support you because you have taken this on as a volunteer. I support public education. Healthcare professionals have been wearing masks for decades, and masks work.
Thank you. Next up, Jacob German, speaking about face coverings.
Good evening. My name is Jacob. Force masking has been the primary topic during public comments. It is a sticking point for parents, both for and against. Well, I would say the masking is a sticking point. Force masking is only a sticking point on one side. But while, while we consider the negative effects of force masking for our children, we seem to forget about the district's move to everything on a Chromebook. My kids, everything's digital. The only thing blocked is general categories. They have unlimited YouTube access, unlimited online video games, unlimited amount of unknown, uncurated content on devices, mostly mobile and largely private. While my 10th grader is being denied access to educational services because his face mask doesn't meet unspoken, unwritten specifications, we seem to forget that over time, that over time, we have encountered school-recommended reading materials that can contain grossing inappropriate sexual content, of which I have to individually check over before I let my kids read. While my eighth grader is being denied access to educational services because of his refusal to wear a face covering, we forget that the district has made it impossible for him to get below a 50% score on his schoolwork. While my seventh grader is being denied access to educational services because of her refusal to wear a face covering, that stress causes me to forget that the most recently ousted school board member is the one who suggested the masking matrix. While I gasp in disbelief at the Hudson High School's illegally isolating my 10th-grade student for five entire school days alone in a room, denied access to teaching instruction and classmate interaction because of face covering violation, it skips my mind that the school board's mission statement was updated this year to eradicate the following concepts: challenging academics, gone; critical thinking, gone; innovation, gone; collaboration, gone; stewardship, gone; replaced by we are dedicated, developing, caring, and contributing members. No, that is, that is a family, a parent's role. And then the second part of the new mission statement, we are collectively committed to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all. A rigorous environment, what is that? That's not even a thing.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Next up is Sean German. Also speaking about masks.
Good evening. I plan to keep this pretty brief, but I just, you know, I have five children in Hudson schools. You know, I've just been quite disappointed in the school board's decision-making through this pandemic and especially just the school year in general. These kids that I've had make their own choices in front of faculty and staff, and I have to constantly pick my kids up from school because somebody in the administration there or a nursing staff has made a decision that my kid's mask is deemed inappropriate or that, and they can't guide me to what is considered an appropriate mask. There's no guidance from the school board at all regarding that. So my kids have had in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, isolation. And the isolation guidelines that are put forth through the state statute are not being followed. And I don't know who's gonna, who's falling back on that. Whose responsibility is that? That's what I want to know as a parent, because it breaks my heart. I come here every school board meeting now to tell you guys things that are happening in the building, the disrespect from the, from principals and such. They're just inconsiderate. They hang up on you because they don't want to tell you what's supposed to be coming from you guys. They can't give us that information. I would really like to see what you guys are giving these principals and their staff, their supportive staff. What is, what are your guidelines? There's nothing. And so my kids have to be pretty much tortured, bullied, teased, isolated, not getting their schoolwork. And because there's maybe one thing at school that they can't take home, that means they can't do their schoolwork. It's something you guys got to think about. I think maybe you don't hear it. Parents are reaching out to you guys and nothing's happening. Like, where is the support? There was no leniency when kids didn't wear a mask or didn't wear an appropriate mask according to somebody. There was no leniency. I would like to see a change.
Right, thank you. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett and German. Also talking about masks. And Brett, what's, what grade are you?
Ten.
All right. Thank you for coming forward.
All right. So I'm a tenth grader in Hudson High School year and oh yeah, I've been suspended for a total of eight days this whole school year. I think five of them, I was in school suspension and solitary confinement in a room where no one was watching me even during lunch. I could lock the door by myself from the inside and it would be much more difficult to unlock from the outside. And what is it? No one came in to watch me at any point. Oh yeah. That happened after I walked to the school, the, someone provided me a mask and I said I wouldn't take it. So they sent me to the office to talk with either one or both of the deans. Then afterward, I would get put in a room and I would just sit there for the rest of the school day and no one would come in to really help me except for maybe deliver or ask if I need anything. Oh yeah, I wear a mask and I think I was got, I was subjectively suspended for wearing a mask that they deemed themselves was not fit or inappropriate for school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Ariana German. Also speaking about masks. Ariana, what grade are you?
Sixth grade.
All right.
And it's Ariana.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in sixth grade and my name is Ariana and I go to Hudson Middle School. And I have been sent home because I have not been wearing my mask. And I can't learn because I, I am wearing a mask and it's hard for me. When I go home, I have homework and I don't know what to do and there's no teachers like to help me and we should wear, we shouldn't be wearing masks to school. And I can't breathe, I can't focus and when my, last year, my brother, he kept missing school because he kept getting headaches from wearing masks. And he well, have you ever asked a student what they think about masks? I hate masks because people can't, they suffocate from wearing them.
All right. Well, thank you. And then last speaker is Stephanie. And I've mispronounced this before, Ouijian? Is it, is that close? All right. Ostigian?
Oustigian, Stephanie.
Oustigian, all right. Very good. I don't have a subject on here, but
No, I apologize for that. I'm here to speak about the mask mandate, mask matrix, I should say. So again, my name's Stephanie Oustigian and I am a trained licensed CPA and CFE, which is a certified fraud examiner. And I'm trained to follow the money when I sense there's a misguided motivation that doesn't align with an organization's vision and/or mission statement. Regarding the Board of Education's own mission statement, as of August ninth, I noticed there was a change made to that. It now states how you, I'm assuming that's the Board of Education, I think before it said we, or vice versa, but how you are committed to now providing a student-centered environment. I have some questions regarding that as it relates to when I'm doing my own vocation, which is following a mission statement. So first of all, how do you measure a student-centered environment? And why I'm asking that is because I follow the money. And I know back in, on September ninth, the federal government came up with a new project called Project Safe. And what it allowed was for student or for the thirteen thousand school districts across the United States to request dollars if they were to follow certain mitigating strategies for COVID nineteen. And does that pertain to masking our children? I've been at every board meeting here, I think it's been the last three, where you have heard very sad stories of disabilities. My son is one of them who cannot wear or hear very well. And so when a mask is on a teacher, he struggles to hear. I've heard of science-based facts about how masks do not work. In fact, I heard a nurse discuss it. And so if our school board is accepting dollars from funding for mitigating strategies that are hurting our students, I would like answers to that. Thank you.
Okay, that ends the citizen's right to speak and then now we're moving on to reports, superintendent report.
All right. Just a couple, couple things, do a COVID operational update. And then I have in my reports, actually, I'll be turning over my time to several of the directors. Just a couple of things to report. Last week, we, we had a pretty good week across the district as far as number of cases. We had a total of twenty-nine cases last week across the district. Twenty the week before, so things are definitely in the right, right spot, you know, down from forty and forty cases about prior to that. So things are, things are going in a, in a good direction. You know, we talked about it the last work session, one month into school. Last year, we had about seventeen cases district-wide. One month this year into school, we were up to a hundred and forty-seven cases district-wide. But things have really started to settle down because over the last couple of weeks, like I've said, we've just, we've had about twenty to thirty cases a week compared to what we're having before. We are continuing to monitor the situation with the mask matrix this week. I think there's only one building that is in masks, that is Rivercrest Elementary School. You know, we responded to some questions that people have had about why isn't the matrix hard and fast? I think it's been the direction the board has given us from the very beginning that the mask matrix is really a guiding tool. And that when things are right on the edge, you know, we would look deeper into the data and look at different things like multiple cases from one family or kids that happen to never be in school that, that were deemed positive. And so we've made some of those adjustments as we've, as we've worked through the, worked through the data. Right now, we're having an interesting situation. Public health is kind of taking a different approach to things. And so we're trying to feel that out and what that looks like because we've kind of been doing things the same way for about eighteen months and how we've handled contacting parents and school return dates and things like that. And just in the last week, we've been told by public health that we're no longer able to do that. But that's a little bit of a problem for us because a lot of parents will call us, let us know that they have a positive test. We put it on the sheets. It generates a date. And then eventually, public health, it'll generate what's called a wedge number. And then they will do the disease investigation. But because sometimes that can be three or four days after we've put it on the sheets. Parents want to know how long is my child out? Our nurse has done a great job responding to that. And, and right now, I know parents are getting a little frustrated with us because we're being told we're not supposed to give that date any longer and the public health wants to give that date. We are continuing to give what we believe is the, the dates that we have been using, like I said, for the last eighteen months, using the same parameters we've been using for the last eighteen months. But it has created a level of, a level of stress there. As far as our mitigation strategies and, and masking and different things, I think we're continuing to show that our matrix allows buildings to move in and out of, of masking. You know, we've talked multiple times up here that if we had a matrix that never ever triggered mask, it was probably too loose. And if we had a matrix that never ever allowed anybody to go maskless or mask recommended instead of mask required, it's probably too tight. And so right now, things seem to be going all right and we'll continue to watch. It's been, we've been told by public health that, and I think it's public information, that the FDA is going to be meeting on October twenty-second, I believe, to review the information related to vaccines for five to eleven-year-olds. At that point, we don't know how long that takes, you know, might take them a couple of days, might take them a couple of weeks after that. But then we can, you know, we can work with the parents and anybody that wants one can have one. There's no requirement. There's no expectation that there's a requirement, but providing access is, is what we try to do. So public health has asked for any, any sites centrally located. Us and New Richmond team seem to be the two most. We kind of cover the southwest part of the county. New Richmond covers kind of the northeast part of the county, allows them to have, you know, if they want to do a vaccination clinic after school. Again, this would be parents, it'd be optional, it'd be set up by parents, I mean, as far as their appointments, but just allowing them to use our space. They're another government entity that's well within our past practice and how we, and how we operate. So that may be coming down the pipe if they, if they ask us to do that. We did have a flu shot clinic and booster shot clinic just in the last, I think it was last Wednesday, is that right? Had a great turnout for that with our staff, well over four hundred flu shots for staff members, people on our insurance. And I think almost two hundred booster shots, COVID boosters. We found out is the only date we could get for the clinic was last Wednesday. People were a little concerned about, you know, conferences being the next day, some of our staff. And so they kind of elected either get their booster shot at a different time or going to wait a little bit. So they had those opportunities and again, that was, that was optional for them. Andrea's been doing a great job putting together our incentive program and support her a hundred percent. We've had different people that have wanted everybody from, you know, some of our support staff to our certified staff. Administrators are not eligible obviously for it, but it, it has been a great incentive. We have, how many, do we know how many cards we've had turned in?
Seventy-two percent, but I think we just got another ten today, so.
Okay, so about seventy-two percent of the staff have submitted cards. So it's been, it's been a great, great program as we work through it. Questions about COVID or what we're doing or process or anything along those lines?
Any questions?
One of the things that people have asked, you know, the, the number that we look, look at on the state's website, it hasn't changed in three days. And people wonder, okay, is it, is it not changing? You just have to remember that if the same number of new cases equals the same number of the day that fell off, the number's not going to change. And so, you know, it, I, the reason I believe it has been changing is because I check it every day, even on the weekends it changes. And it, they, the districts around us are changing. So it's not as though they would leave us stagnant and, and change everybody else's. So I will say that other parts of the county are, are starting to see quite an increase in cases. And, you know, we've actually started to come down from where we've, where we've been in the past a little bit. So we continue to monitor the data, continue to look at things and, and track it and make recommendations that way. So the other thing that we have that's somewhat COVID-related, that's tied back to the report is I'm going to turn it over to Andrea on transportation route changes.
Okay. And so I do want to take a moment and celebrate Safeway Bus Company and Steve Shauner, Assistant Director of Transportation, and Kelly Schickling, who is the administrative assistant there. We ran all our routes up to this point and I think that's really exciting compared to a lot of surrounding school districts that were unable to do that. And they have been working tirelessly on this. So we did, we have been trying to get a little more proactive in the situation because we are facing the same shortage nationwide. That's a shortage nationwide in terms of our bus drivers. So we sent a communication out last Friday to all families asking for a little bit of grace essentially with some potential adjustments to routes. And then reminding parents that it is a federal requirement to, to utilize masks when, when on public transportation. And that we are out of support for Safeway as well as that expectation at the federal level to enforce those with potential discipline, if not complied with. It has been an ongoing issue. Fortunately, we have multiple Safeway bus drivers that came down with COVID since the start of school. Some serious illness is associated with that. So we are on the brink of having to either combine routes, which we will be doing later this week. Everyone in the bus company is running routes, even the owner of the bus company driving the routes. So we are very, very, very thin and that's why we put out the communication last week. Is because we wanted to give the parents the, the heads up that we will have to look at. We're going to call it a green day, which is like today where all our routes ran, still using all their backups. Yellow day where we might have to combine routes and then red days where we have to combine multiple routes, where some drivers may be running two routes, which would affect pickup and drop-off times. But we also are working with, we just had a meeting today, working with Tracy on the communications that we're going to be sending out notifying parents via text if the routes are going to change and the Alert Now system so that we can keep people up to date. And again, our goal is always to make sure that we are getting kids to school, getting kids home in a safe and reasonable fashion. So we're committed to doing that and we're again, very supportive of the Safeway Bus Company in their work on this.
Any questions? For Andrea? Go ahead, Molly.
How, do you have an idea once, if we get to the point where we have to start combining routes? Because I haven't seen the email, I apologize. How much time is this going to add to kids' trip to or from school?
Well, what we're doing is we're looking at the shortest routes and actually my kid's route is one of the routes affected where the, Rivercrest is a dense area or Heritage Greens neighborhood. And so by adding, the routes are typically about fifteen, twenty minutes. And so we're still going to be well within that hour timeline. So for example, instead of my kid getting picked up at eight twenty-six, he'll get picked up at eight fifteen. So that's kind of our first level is just to kind of tweak, add some of the smaller routes together. So that again, we're always within the one hour time period. But it just may be a little bit different look depending upon how short those routes are.
Do you know the average age of the drivers for Safeway Bus Company?
I don't know the average age, but I know, I would say probably at least eighty percent are over typical social security eligibility. Is that fair to say? I know it's, it's an older workforce.
An older workforce.
Often times, yeah.
Yeah. So they're obviously in a more vulnerable position with breakthrough COVID and yes, kinds of things. Okay. Thank you. Thanks to Safeway too.
Any other questions for board members regarding transportation changes? All right. Then next up is mental health, social and emotional learning update.
Yep, Erin's going to be speaking on this part of the report.
So I'm looking forward to sharing just some updates on some things that we're working on this year and some things that we're making improvements on. If you want to. So this report really focuses on social, emotional learning resources within all of our schools. We'll talk a little bit about social, academic and emotional behavior risk screener that we're implementing this year for grades six through twelve. And then an increase in our co-located mental health services within all of our buildings and then some of the work of our mental health advisory council. So are, all of our buildings, so K through twelve, have a common social, emotional learning resource. Middle school is in their second year of implementation of a resource called Seven Mindsets. Last year, our elementary schools and high schools, high school went through a curriculum review process and both landed on that same resource as well, which is exciting because there's lots of opportunities for some vertical alignment within this resource. It's really focused on building the skills that students need to be successful at school and in their learning environments. Learning how to collaborate successfully and those soft skills that we talk so often about. Just making sure that every student has equal access to learning the skills that they need. So allowing us to do this at more of a universal level rather than sort of a targeted instruction for some students. So it's exciting work. Our social, emotional learner, learning screening is something that we've been working on for a few years and selecting the right tool. In the past, we've done a depression screener at ninth grade. And what we learned is that one, it was only hitting one grade. And two, it was a bit too narrow in allowing us to get information about the actual skills that students may need. And so this screener will be implemented in grades six through twelve this year and really focuses on the social behavior, academic behavior and emotional behavior. And so this information will be used in a variety of ways. One, it'll be used by our social, emotional learning teams by looking at data over a grade level. Is there something that a particular grade level could use a boost in instruction regarding those individual skills? As well as allowing us to Um, as well as allowing us to address, um, some lagging skills, um, for particular students. And so that, there will be some um, parent communication along with that and some opportunities for parents to come in and learn about what the screening, um, what the screening is and what it's used for. So looking forward to that. Co-located mental health therapy has been something we talked, we've been talking about for many years. It's a really great service that we're able to provide um, for our students and families who are experience, experiencing some barrier to accessing mental health therapy outside of school. Um, and so when we started this program, we started it in five of eight of our buildings. Um, and the last few years, we have increased that service to all of our buildings. Um, this year, we have a really strong partnership with Family Therapy Associates and are able to start the year with a therapist in every building with an opportunity to build, um, even more support as the year goes on in our, in our larger buildings. We have a very active, um, mental health advisory council. So this is our fourth year. With this council. So it involves community members, parents. We have some very active students who are, who are working to recruit other students to join because they're seniors this year. And school staff. So this year, we're really focusing on supporting our community and supporting our students um, through different parent engagement, um, activities. So we're planning three separate parent engagement activities. One will be sort of a mental health, uh, wellness fair to kind of kick off the year, um, in November. Then in, um, January, um, our focus will likely be around anxiety and providing some, um, presentations and just strategies and opportunities for parents to come and learn from each other and from experts. Um, and then April will be focusing on technology and mental health. Um, so for older students, we'll, um, there'll be a lot of information for parents around social media use and the risks associated with that. Um, and for younger students, really focusing on that screen time piece in terms of technology and some, um, some tools that families can take away from every single one of those events. Um, also looking to host another family fun event, just getting families outside, connecting with other families, connecting with each other. And then working on a student voices project. One of the things that, um, has been discussed quite a bit in our council with the support of the students who are on our council is making sure that adults understand sort of that student experience around mental health. Um, the way us as parents grew up looks very different than what our students are experiencing right now. And so, I'm excited to kind of share as that project continues to grow. Um, not exactly sure what the details are, but really excited to, get a lot of input from our own students and their experiences. Questions?
Any questions for Erin? Yes, go ahead. Okay, Kate has one, okay.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is for the screenings, do parents get permission for those screenings to happen?
So there is information coming out this week about that, and there is an opt-out option for that. And so parents will be able to opt their student out if they, if they choose.
And then that's yearly for each?
So the screener will happen in the fall and in the spring. And so on that form, that will be going out, there's, it, you're opting out for the fall and the spring.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my second question was the co-located therapy.
Yeah.
Did, who funds that? Does the family then have to pay a fee for that or how does that work?
Yep. So we have a memorandum of understanding with Family Therapy Associates. We work through, they work through the family's insurance.
Okay.
Um, if there are barriers there, there are, um, agencies that we can connect families with for additional support. Some families are, do use the sliding scale fee. They're very good about sitting down with families and talking through what their options are in terms of that.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions? All right, thank you for your report, Erin.
All right, uh, the next one up is gonna be our teacher advisor committee, TAC committee, uh, Andrea leads that and we have her give an update on it.
Okay, well, it was an exciting meeting. It was the first meeting of the, of the new school year. Other than our August introductory meeting, we added five new members. So we wanted to make sure, um, based on our, uh, August meeting that we had, um, specified, uh, representation from every building. So now we have two, minimum of two representatives from each elementary building. Um, four from the high school and three from the middle school. So we added staff members and they applied to be on it. Um, added staff members to accomplish that objective. So it was their first meeting, which I think was fun and added a lot of different, um, uh, voices to the room, which is always great. We talked about everything, uh, pertaining to enrollment and staffing. COVID certainly was a topic, um, facilities committee, wellness, uh, TSS. Um, surprisingly, yeah, every, it was the school closure, it was professional development, it was a variety of issues. But another new change for this committee was that we now have a teacher kind of co-chair with me. Emily Sorenson is the, was the representative selected by the, um, teachers, um, at our last meeting to kind of work with me. We work on both the selection of the committee, um, members as well as the agenda. So a couple of weeks in advance. Kind of go through the agenda. She gathers all the feedback from her teachers, she's middle school math, um, but, and then gets it from the whole group and then we put it all together. We kind of synthesize it. Uh, I work with our cabinet as well to make sure that we cover those op topics. And, um, I think we have a very robust conversation, which I think is always a great thing. To have the different voices at the table. And then we are meeting again in December.
Any questions for Andrea? Thank you for your report. Uh, next up is the official third Friday enrollment.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, uh, Tim give you the final, the final count. I know we talked about this prominently, uh, at the work session.
Yeah, not, not a lot of changes in the report. We had, we had very few in the upper section of that report and that's the part that we submit to DPI. Um, when we look at that again, just kind of a reminder as we look at those, uh, especially the section to the right under DPI totals. So our September count is five thousand four hundred and twelve residents and, uh, last year was five thousand four twenty-eight. Uh, we certainly like to see that number in total come up rather than go down. Um, there's a number of reasons. Uh, one of, one of the things that, um, if you remember, we had about, uh, an increase of about a hundred students go out to homeschool last year. Um, now we're starting to see those kids come back. We've got a, we've got a decrease in the homeschool section of about a hundred and forty-six kids. And that's that section down below at the bottom of the page, which is listed as other schools. So that went from, uh, two fifty-eight last year, we're at one twelve now. That, that number is one that's changed a little bit since last time we talked. Uh, those homeschool get, reports get done, uh, October fifteenth. Those are due, so that number will probably change again. Uh, as, as that reporting deadline comes up, uh, we had a slight change to St. Pat's numbers. Uh, they went down from one seventy-five to one sixty-five. So, uh, not a lot of major changes in this report. Uh, again, uh, one of the brighter, brighter areas of it is that you can see the open enrollment, uh, into the district is at one sixty-five. The open enrollment out of the district is one fifty-eight. So, uh, that's the first time that we've had, uh, higher open enrollment in than we have had out for, for a long time. Um, incidentally, when, when we look at the open enrollment out, uh, the two districts that, uh, make up a little more than fifty percent of that number are St. Croix Central and River Falls. So they're about, uh, roughly about ninety students of that and one hundred fifty-eight. So, uh, that's all I've got. Uh, so if you have any questions.
Questions for Tim? All right, thanks Tim for that report. And next up, we have action items. Uh, we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with language from the expenditures. We have volunteers. All right, Carrie?
Uh, move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million four hundred four thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda items are approved with expenditures. Next up on the action items is the Wasby Region Four election. And Nick, why don't you fill us in how this works, because it's been a long time since we've had uh, an election in this position, because the person held it for.
Yeah, held it for a long time and they ran uncontested. So, uh, there are two candidates that are running for the Was, uh, Wasby, uh, Region Four Director position. Ellen or Eileen Sikora is, uh, is running and she is from the Cornell School Board. And Ellen, we pray, Tuttenhagen, uh, is running from the River Falls School Board. Uh, both have spent, uh, quite a bit of time on, on their respective school boards. Uh, essentially what happens is the board has to come to a consensus, uh, and then you have one, one vote as a board, uh, that we, that we get. So it's not like each person gets to vote. So, um, with that being said, I guess there, there's not an administrative recommendation for this because, um, this is more board level. So if anybody has anything they want to put out there, then eventually we'll need a motion, uh, for, um, to delegate who the district should vote on behalf of.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. President. I have not met Eileen Sikora, but I do know Ellen. Think he is a very well-qualified person, have had an opportunity to talk with him about his decision to lean in at a time when many are thinking about running for the door. Um, I also always think it's nice to have someone close to home when you're looking at a person who's gonna, um, be representing your region. So I would, um, suggest that be, would recommend that we would, um, endorse and vote for, cast our vote for Ellen in this election.
One suggestion for Ellen, is there any others comments that anyone wants to make on these two individuals?
I'm wondering if we have time to kind of look through some of these or is this something that needs to happen right away?
Needs to happen right away because the vote is tomorrow.
Yeah, the vote is tomorrow.
Yeah. Um, I guess while you folks are reading that, I mean, I, I, I read, uh, the backgrounds for both, but like Heather, I've known and, uh, Ellen actually talked to him. And then in looking at the backgrounds, I voted for regional people like in the Bar Association. When we look at that, it's a statewide organization. And my vote, a lot of times, I'm, end up voting for people that I might not necessarily know, but I look at who they represent and what they represent. I think both these candidates have excellent credentials, um, been on school boards for thirteen years or more and, um, leadership positions. So that's both, um, uh, you know, they're both well-qualified, but the differentiation I would see is having somebody that's a little bit closer to Hudson, also from a school district that is more similar to Hudson. Which we run into quite a bit in this region of the state is that there's not many school districts that are close to our size. So for those reasons, I would second Heather's nomination. But if somebody has other thoughts, I'm open to those discussions and words now. Otherwise, also entertain a motion to bring it to a vote. And I guess in this case, we have six present. I'm not sure if Bruce, uh, we've got sound quality or did you want to weigh in at all? Not hearing him, so.
Mr. President, I would, I would move that we cast our vote for Ellen Tuckton-Hagan.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. And I guess, uh, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. All right, the ayes have it. And, uh,
Heather, you're gonna be participating tomorrow? Well, I mean, that's, that's one order of business. We have to, the board has to, um, pick an individual to attend the meeting tomorrow at noon. Yeah, it said, uh, it's not necessary to inform Wasby ahead of time, we'll be voting per the Wasby bylaws. But the vote for the regional director must be cast by a school board member. Administrators and other staff are not eligible to vote on behalf of their boards.
Okay, so we just need somebody, and this is by Zoom or by phone?
I believe it's a Zoom link.
Zoom link, okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I am happy to do it and would be happy if someone else was excited about doing it to, to let them log in and cast our vote.
Anyone else? I just, I, I would do it, but, uh, I'm gonna be on a plane in the morning to Florida and I don't know that I'll be necessarily picked up my luggage at, uh, the checkout or whatever by that time. So I don't want to get into a time crunch, yes.
Uh, I can, I can do it via Zoom if, uh, I have the link.
Yep, we'll send you the link and make sure you have everything.
Are you good with that, Heather?
Thank you, Carrie. I'm very good with that.
Anyone want to stand up and have a strong objection against Carrie doing this on our behalf?
Please do.
All right, I think we have our person. Uh, we're just fortunate to have at least one person willing to do it. So thank you for that. I'm willing to enable. Thank you, Carrie. All right, next up is our district goals. This is something that we heard a report on at our work session.
Absolutely.
And, uh, Nick, you want to do a little intro because I know there was feedback from board members, um, so.
Absolutely. Yep, so we, uh, took feedback from board members, made sure we had baseline data in there. You know, what is our current situation for each of our goals? Um, and so we, there, you know, what our, what our data points were. Um, we are focusing on, with our students, we're focusing on ELA and math, uh, when we're talking about include, uh, closing the achievement gap. Uh, we're looking at two, uh, two groups. Uh, they happen to be, uh, far below what our, our average proficiencies are, which is, uh, students of color and also students, uh, they come from, uh, uh, lower, oh, uh, SE, SES or socioeconomic background. Uh, when you go into our team, we're really looking at, uh, focusing on our staff. Um, trying to figure out our effectiveness of our wellness committee. We've been putting a lot of initiatives forward and trying to get some, uh, data uh, to see how we're doing and making sure we're moving things forward. And then with our staff engagement survey, also, um, looking at, uh, employee engagement. Because we know that, um, recognition is a big piece of retention. And in this job market, it is, uh, yeah, very, very important, obviously, to hold on to staff we have and then attract new staff. And so that's a, uh, big piece in our team area. And then our community, we're really looking at, um, two different, uh, two different areas. Uh, parent engagement survey with Safe and Healthy Schools, and that's an index, uh, that we take from multitude of questions on there. Uh, continuing to, to improve that score, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the other, the other piece is looking at always improving our communication as it relates to our websites and providing meaningful and, and timely information. Constantly trying to push, uh, push those numbers up. I mean, we have a fairly high, uh, you know, and I think Heather's talked about before. We have a fairly high number of acceptable, but it's highly acceptable or, um, strongly agree versus agree. And so, um, you know, constantly trying to look at how we can push those numbers up. Uh, sometimes people say, well, gosh, these don't look like really big changes, but you have to understand to move the needle on some of these, uh, when you get uh, to a higher point is, it takes quite a bit to move it. And, uh, you know, we're continuing, uh, to look at how we can close gaps and, and get some of these things done. So, um, but we wanted to make sure that we took the board's, uh, feedback on making sure that we did have, um, last year's baseline data in there so that you could see that. So the recommendation would be to approve the goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Is there any questions of Nick or do we have a motion?
Uh, move to approve the goals as, uh, presented.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion by Carrie, second by Heather. Any further discussion regarding the district goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, just to echo your, your, um, recollection of my comment, Nick, I, I do, um, I, I think it would be meaningful for the, for the board to see that, that breakdown, because I do think, I hear what you're saying about it's hard to get that overall average to move. Um, so if there was a way for us to get subdata that kind of shows that hopefully we're moving more parents from the fours into the fives, that would be a meaningful indicator.
Absolutely. And, you know, the thing that we're gonna be doing at the October work session is we're gonna be, um, gonna be showing you kind of our strategic plan maps that each of the buildings and, and, uh, departments have done in the district and where we're going to address those components on our strategic plan over the next five years. And then also, uh, just give you some examples of, um, our action plans for this year, how it drills down even deeper for each, each level. And so, uh, you'll, all of these things are tied back, these goals are coming off our strategic plans. So the name of the game is really alignment, getting us all moving in the same direction. Uh, we're in a, feeling like we're in a really good spot, but yes, we'll get that and we'll get all that subdata and information for you as well.
And just for the public, then, um, that we set the goals now at this October action meeting and then when will they be reported on?
Yep, so, um, we've, we've changed up when we, when we give surveys, uh, student parent surveys, staff surveys, we've changed that to the spring now. Yep, so um we've we've changed up when we when we give surveys, uh student parent surveys, staff surveys, we've changed that to the spring now so that we can get. All of our data basically back. I think uh the usually the last piece of data point that we're waiting on is student achievement data. From the state and that usually comes by July, Dave, doesn't it? Some time in July. So our goal is now we'll be able to start presenting these, you know, in August, the August work session, accepting on in the September meeting, so. We're about a month behind where we would like to be, but some of that is our data was delayed this last year with uh getting our forward results back and things along those lines.
Wonder why that was delayed?
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Um so, yeah, yeah, we'll get into that, so we'll report out against these goals, probably uh the goal would be to report out in August of next year.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, otherwise, all those in favor of adopting the recommended goals for twenty one twenty two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have the school start time survey review.
Turn it over to the team on that.
Yes, and uh.
So the document that was shared with you um all in what's up on the screen. Is where we're currently at, and this incorporates uh the discussion from the last work session. Uh I believe we captured um all of that conversation in this. Um I think the layout looks good, and thank you for the color suggestion because that helps um bring people through this. Survey uh if there's, I guess, because we've talked about this multiple times and there isn't any significant change other than. Making sure that uh the comments from the last work session are included in this, if there's questions from folks.
I should have emailed you about this, Tracy, just a question I had um. On the potential impacts related to before and after school activities in the green section. Um. I had brought up before, and I don't know if anybody has any taste for it, putting um like in the second bullet bullet point, activities would be pushed later into the evening or. Possibly the morning, and I know that's kind of a. Uh some people don't want things pushed into the morning. Um and I'm, I kind of feel like that should be. Open, but maybe we need to discuss it just a little bit more or not.
Can you can you tell us a little bit more, Molly, about what what are you looking for?
Well, if school, I know some of the concerns are, you know. Activities get pushed, could be pushed over an hour later, and you get some uh swim practices or just lots of practices end up being really late. Um can we move some of those things at the morning if the high school isn't starting until eight fifty, let's say? To pick a number, or the middle school, why can't we have swim practice at seven AM? And my my thought on that is. We've set the school start times to be what we think would be the best. And then we allow parents to decide if they want their kids to participate in a sport, and if it's in the morning. It may be easier than to have it pushed to a practice at ten o'clock at night.
So to that point, there is a separate call out question about this, so just because this particular issue would um impact multiple. Um options or could potentially be uh used in multiple options, so it is at the end, so there is a specific question.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I guess I would echo uh Molly's concern, I think um if we're gonna if we're gonna state it right here at the beginning about the potential impacts. We should, we should state that one option would be to to have an uh the option to have morning activities as well. The optional practices because. I mean, if we're concerned about sleep, getting up to to take a math test is different than getting up, uh choosing to get up for basketball practice.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I wonder if we don't just add a bullet, Tracy, to that green section that says something like depending on community response to a question below. Um activities could happen, could also have take place before school starts or something like that, just to, you know, make that point there to plant that seed in people's heads. Uh my one question was uh the bullet about um community youth sports clubs or other adult activities would start after school activities are finished, which would be approximately six thirty PM. Compared to the current start time of. What? That might be helpful to have that same comparison there that we have for the um for the secondary after school activities in those bullets, and I don't know what that time is, but yep, yep, thank you.
And I'm sorry. Nice to pull up a question. Don't a number of uh community youth activities take place in elementary schools also?
Yes, but so do our high school athletics.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I know I saw Bob, you um commented um via email. And it was a pretty good point about just that. Do we, is there a place in here to point out to folks that? If we want to be the pioneers to be the ones to change start times and nobody else in in the conference does that? Does that mean that more kids are going to be missing time from school in order to participate in athletics and other uh inner uh scholastic uh clubs and so forth?
And and to that question, Tracy did point out to me that I had read a little closer, there is a a section for that. Um but uh I I do have concerns that, you know, again, being like you mentioned, being one of the only districts, you know, to start this. That I think we really need to let parents know that to get to some of these activities in other in other schools or other areas. Get on a bus and get there, they will be taking off more classes, you know, at the end of their day to get to these other schools on time. And I think that's an educational concern.
Well, and I think um. I think you guys have done an awesome job. I mean, I know that this has been uh reported on, you know, three times, I think this is. It's a great survey and. I think that your simple sentence is, you know, it's settle, it's a settled on sentence after that first introductory paragraph says the committee would now like to gather feedback on the proposed options. Through this parent survey. So it's very clear, it's a parent survey, it's not a community survey, it's not a student survey, but a parent survey. And um noted. I guess I know what's not there is any kind of. Misunderstanding or if you will, or a promise that. Whatever option gets the most votes is going to be the one that the school board's bound to do. That's not the case, all right? This is just an advisory. Survey among parents to see what parents, how strongly they feel that a change is needed and so forth, and how it might impact them. And I think it's, that's why I backed it, the fact that we have a survey on this. Because I want to see, is it something that's more than just uneven split? Or is there very? You know, is there weak support, is there very strong support, is the opposition? Um you know, this survey school perceptions can break down all the different subgroups and so forth, and should be instructive. But that's. To that, that's the extent of it. It's going to be instructive and advisory, but not binding on the school board. I would just hope that that's a full understanding. If anybody has a different understanding, uh they should definitely speak now.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I don't disagree with that. I I I apologize, I missed this when reading it before. Um where it says the committee would now like to gather feedback, I I would. Change that to the board would now like to gather feedback. I think the committee would probably appreciate that change.
All right. Any other suggestions other than um? We've had a couple minor changes, questions that were clarified where things do exist in there, and uh. I'm just crossing my fingers that people read the whole survey, and unlike the sixteen page survey we sent on a. Sir, on a issue that ended up costing less than a hundred million dollars, this uh. The actual long term cost of this could be a hundred million dollars if people look real closely at it, so. Because the additional costs are going to be incurred annually ad infinitum, so. Um hopefully folks take everything into account. It's not just a money decision, but still, I don't want to discount the. There's a lot of parameters to this, and you guys did just an awesome job of trying to point out those, and I love the color coding, it kind of. If you didn't have that blocking, it would get really. People would read the first page and a half and they'd be done, so I think it it's something that I was able to get through in. Less than fifteen minutes, I think average time will probably be ten.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A quick logistical question, Tracy, is it accurate that then working through school perceptions, this um an invitation to participate would go out to. Each person who is registered as a parent or guardian of an enrolled Hudson School District. Student, and it would be a unique link, and they could, they would be able to take the the survey once with that link.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just had one question because you brought up the financial impact as well, and I know I've brought this up, but. I just wonder where it says potential impacts related to transportation, and then it goes on to talk a lot about finances. I wonder if it should say something to the effect of potential impact related to financial and to transportation. That some people that were really concerned about that might pay more attention to that.
Well, if we just added, you mean the word and finances to the word after transportation?
Right.
Would that?
So the yellow box should read um related to transportation and finance?
Yes.
Well, not towards, but um it it it's not an impact related to transportation and finance, it's potential impacts related to transportation. Including financial impacts, so maybe it's in parentheses and including financial because it's not a an impact related, you get what I'm saying, Tracy?
Yep.
We're okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other suggestions, comments, otherwise? I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving uh the survey and. I guess we didn't get the timing on this with. I don't want to pin you down to a specific date, but where what what's our window?
I believe initially the we wanted to get this out to families uh before the holidays start, so.
I think that's wise.
By early November.
Okay.
End of this month.
Right. Great, and by holidays defining that to include our three days off we have for Thanksgiving, right?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right.
So, Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the survey.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh I think Carrie beat you, but all right. All those in favor of approving the survey uh to go out to parents from via school perceptions as indicated and recommended by administration. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up. We have the Facilities Task Force Committee update.
I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you. Um so just a very brief summary, last Monday night we met. And uh this was our third meeting, and so we had that we'd we'd an uptick in the number of members, which was great, great to see. We had about forty five people consisting of parents. Uh community members, board members, staff and administration. Uh and the link is there to some of the things that we discussed. Uh but we but we toured Willow River Elementary, and I think that was that was interesting for folks. Um we went into small groups, community member, tried to pair up community members, parents and and administrative staff. And have more of a more of a smaller group discussion on things, so we could get a little deeper into. Uh what people's priorities were and when where they were with everything. I think if we look at uh page eleven. Under trajectories on the report. Um it it goes through three different scenarios or a mix, uh and the last one is a mix, so. Uh really, one first is doing nothing, just continuing with their status quo. Second one would be remodel existing buildings where needed. And the third is is building replacement, so or fourth one's a mix of items two and three. So we're going to continue to talk about that, we're going to look a little bit more at the next meeting, a little bit more at educational adequacy. Um the numbers we've got here are mostly uh larger maintenance and capital improvements, but don't don't include a lot of educational adequacy in them. So uh that's uh that's the summary, uh any questions?
So um as far as. On this uh link we had, you got the task force charge and then step one teaming and so forth. Where would you say we are with the? On the step somewhere around step five? Step six?
Jamie, which what are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Whatever was on the agenda there that.
Oh, I see.
Facilities Task Force.
Yeah, so a- as far as the this most recent meeting on the agenda?
Yeah, I guess where are we in the process? Because I know we still have at least three meetings.
I think I think we've got, I think we've got a ways to go yet. Um and really getting in the into that trajectories discussion, and that's just kind of touching the surface, uh that was towards the end of this last meeting. So we have more discussion, we have a lot more to discuss the to discuss there. We also have to look at uh the architects are putting some uh numbers together for educational adequacy, and so. Because we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, so that's uh, you know, it's it's possible we may go past that November fifteenth meeting. That last meeting. And it's possible there may not be a recommendation until after the after the November twenty second, which was. Uh what we were hoping to hit November twenty second presentation and recommendation to the board.
All right. All right, well, I appreciate that update and uh. The candor as far as the timing of this, but I'd rather have a good recommendation rather than a speedy one, so. I appreciate the work that everyone's putting into that and great to see the greater participation, so. Is there any other comments? I know we had several board members there the other night, and yeah, go ahead.
Uh I'd just like to. Echo what Tim said about it was it was really good, is that the last two meetings, and there were uh more community members uh with smaller uh children. Or smaller age elementary students, that that was great. I was very impressed with the. Realistic way they they looked at the data real quick, just coming into it fresh, so I'd say that, yeah, I'd be surprised if things go real quick here. Uh I think it's it's better to take a little time and let some of the newer people that are on the have joined the committee, and I've heard some even other people that are still wanting to be a part of it, so. A little more time to digest that and get caught up, um maybe some requests to go back and see one of the buildings that. Uh has been missed, but very impressed with the process so far. Thank you.
Carrie?
Uh Tim, I think the architects had mentioned at the last meeting that if there are new folks or even the the folks that were at the last meeting that uh they would they would start the meeting at five thirty.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, you're you're correct.
Just to kind of recap everything that potentially had been missed, okay? Thank you.
And I think, you know, the fact that it might go a little bit longer is also indicative of. You know, we're we're getting um a group that's not totally homogeneous, you know, they're. They're, these are folks come from diverse backgrounds, and now getting some people with young kids is good, and getting some newer people to community. Not everybody on this commu- committee. Has been in every building and has been in living in this community for thirty years or three generations or whatever, so. Trying to get everyone, you know, kind of up to speed, it does take a little bit of time and. Uh you know, answering their questions too, because that's what uh you know, getting the the process uh has to. It has to go through a process for sure. All right, any other comments? All right, then we're up to the last agenda item, and that is transportation incentives. I'm assuming this is Andrea or Tim?
Uh I can I can start out. I know Andrea is is kind of giving you an update on the where we are overall with transportation, and like she said, today was a good day. Um but as she also mentioned, um we have, we have a number of drivers out with COVID. Uh the owner and some of the office staff are driving, uh looking at some kind of consolidation of routes, it's a it's a national problem. This was a problem. Prior to COVID, and it's just COVID has exacerbated this issue, so um. What we're looking at, the proposal on the table would be uh Safely's looking at increasing their driver pay by two dollars an hour. Um they're going to, they're going to move forward with this, uh no matter what you decide uh tonight, or if you decide to do it at all tonight. Uh but we'd like to add a dollar an hour to that, so it would be a three dollar an hour increase for starting the drivers. And that wage would be twenty one dollars an hour. We we've lost some drivers to neighboring districts, and uh again, we're kind of, we're kind of hanging on the edge here as to how it impacts uh how it impacts transportation in the districts, so. Um again, it's it's starting to try and focus. So again, it's, it's starting to try and focus on what can we do to attract and retain drivers? So the cost on this, if we looked at a whole year, a whole school year, it would be about $74,000. This would be a little less than that because we'd be starting into the school year. So probably running around 65, $66,000 for the year. And so Andrea, if you've got anything additional to add to that, any questions?
Mr. President?
Heather.
So at what point would this incentive go away?
Well, that's a great question. As we mentioned, this is a national, we have a national problem and it was prior to the pandemic. The, the positions are tough because they're split ships. I don't know that we would go backwards. It would be, it, it might be very tough if we take it away a year later, Heather, that we could wind up losing drivers. We can certainly go back and explore it and see if we're still competitive. But it's a great question and it's one where we don't, I don't know that we've got an answer that it would be, you know, that it would be something that we would take away.
And what qualifications does someone has to have to have to drive? I mean, this feels like a little bit of a call to action. Rosie the Riveter sort of help our schools, help our kids come, come drive buses for us. I assume there's some sort of a driver credential you have to get to drive school buses.
Yeah, they have to have a commercial driver license endorsement and they have, that's, that includes quite a bit of training and they have to pass the test. So that, that's, those are the minimum pieces. And Safeway has also tried to attract, you know, one of, one of the areas they, they've worked on. Is drivers don't normally like to fuel up with diesel fuel. It's messy, it's stinky and et cetera. So they have, they've contracted with another company to, to fill buses. They've done a lot of different things for driver appreciation. They've tried a number of different things and we're, we're pretty fortunate that we have not experienced some of the problems that some of our other neighboring districts. And districts nationwide are experiencing right now.
And I would add to that too, that I know that they have a hiring incentive, just like what we did, that this has been building over the last few years. This isn't like it's come out of the blue. We've had conversations about how we're kind of pushing the edge of, in terms of the number of drivers. Where we are doing a call to action for our coaches if they want to get their CBL. Stuff like that. We're going to be pushing out some communicator, Safeway has asked us to push out some communication to our families, asking if anyone's interested. And if you're driving a van, then you don't need a CBL. So that might be an option. And so we've been trying to be creative in the exploration of alternative employment opportunities too.
Any further comments or questions? I would just add that I think that this is a very good idea and that we need to stay ahead of the curve. I've heard other districts not that far from us who have actually, their school boards, their hand has been forced to change the policy. And make elementary's kids walk a couple miles to school because there wasn't enough bus drivers to drive the routes. And given some of our streets, I don't think that that's a safe, wise community thing to do. For us to be putting little kids, you know, out on, out on the streets in the morning. So is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move.
Second.
My motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Motion is approved for the transportation incentives to be enforced or implemented by administration. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, since Bruce isn't here, I move to turn.
Got you, Bruce. Got you. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned.